Good morning. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting, March 27, 2023. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on April 4, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. The 10:30 a.m. is when they start the planning items. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. Roll call, we're missing two. Okay, Kevin, Kevin B. and Jim Coleman. First item on the agenda is approval of the March 13, 2023 minutes. Have you all had a chance to review them in your packet? If so, the Chair would address a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes.
Moved and seconded to approve the 20, March 13, 2023 minutes discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Have you had a chance also to re-review the agenda as it is submitted?
Request.
Chair would address a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted for the March 27, 2023 meeting with Planning Commission discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Brittany, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 7104 for David Allard to review a mobile home park in a commercial zoning district. The staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 7104 with the applicant's concurrence as it is no longer needed. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1822 for Hay Yard Hills LLC Rodney Slather to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1822 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1839 for Michael Bosetti to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1839 with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU 2111 for Travis Christman. Theodore Christman is the owner, to review a 12-by-60 single-wide mobile home in an agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 2111 with the applicant's concurrence as it is no longer needed. Item number seven is conditional use permit review CU 2167 for Kelly and Casey Kurtz to live in a double-wide mobile home while living a single-family residence, and the mobile, double-wide mobile home will be removed from the property, to recommend approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2167 with conditions. Item number eight is conditional use permit amendment review CU 2206 for Ken and Kim Dis to review a gunsmithing business to allow for buying and selling of new and used firearms in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit amendment CU 21-06 with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Does the staff have a desire to have any pull today?
No, not at this time.
Is there any that you would like to have pulled from the commission members?
Number eight, please.
Number eight from the audience. Would anyone here to speak on any of those items that they feel is necessary, they aren't in agreement with the recommendation? All right, we're going to pull item number eight, Jerry. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised?
All moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with item number eight removed. That would leave items number three through seven. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number eight.
Sure.
And I may not remember this right, but this was at the end of the Tigerville Road, and this person was going to work with ammo, I think, only originally.
That is correct.
And I guess, we had numerous people come in and expressed concerns about UPS trucks going up and down the road and all that. Now we're going to buy and sell firearms. Is there any concern now that there'll be more traffic with him? I assume internet is how he's going to do it.
He is, and there haven't been any complaints on this during the review. It looks like it'll be reviewed again in three years. Typically, these don't generate a whole lot of traffic. We have several of them in the county, and very little complaints and very little issues with them.
Okay, well, nobody's here today, too, so I was just curious. Anyhow, that's the only thing I had, Mr. Chair.
Would you care to move on item number?
I would make a motion that we accept agenda item number eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept per staff's recommendation, item number eight, which is CU 22-06 with 14 conditions. Discussion. Anyone from the audience care to discuss this matter? From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number nine.
Megan Talmadge Planner. Agenda item number nine is conditional use permit 23-07 is a request to allow a multifamily dwelling in accordance with the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends to continue this item due to further information being found for the Forest Street easement.
All right, Megan, thank you. Did most of the members that are here receive the additional information from Jerry this morning, for your packet?
Okay, item number nine, Charlie, is that CU 2307?
Yep. Yes, it is.
So let me read a letter that I sent to Brittany yesterday.
Sure.
I purchased 40 acres. When I say I, me, to access that 40 acres, I needed an easement across Mr. Benning's lot. Kim agreed to the easement as long as there were no more than seven lots or 7911 addresses. I sold 30 acres to Larry Pearson, who then subdivided the 30 acres into five lots referred to Hill City Heights. I subdivided the LaGranne lot, that was, LaGranne was 10 acres, and I subdivided that in the two lots. So now we got seven lots with 911 addresses. And my concern is that until we approve this, we really need to identify if we're going to jeopardize that road easement that Kim was so nice to grant us. So I'm asking for the continuance so the state's attorney can sit there and look at those legal documents, see how we want to go forward. I don't want to get into a situation where the existing seven residences could actually lose their access. So that's why I'm asking for continuance.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I noted to Megan before the meeting that I had read and reviewed this previous to showing up here, and it appeared to exceed the guidelines in the assessment. I don't want to go any further because I'm not an attorney, and it appears by one address at least, so.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Benning is in the audience, if you'd like for him to speak on this matter as well.
Megan, I think we probably should. I'll call you back up. Mr. Benning, would you like to speak to us now before we put a motion on the table? I have to ask you just to introduce yourself for the record, and you can go from there. Thank you.
My name's Kim Bedding, and I live at 440 Forest Street, and I do own a portion of that road that these people in Hill City Heights utilize for their trips to and from home. That is not the legal access. The legal access is a continuation of 420 Forest Street, 420 Forest Street, which is in the city of Hill City. I'm trying to remember who owns that now. It used to be Oler Kings for years and years, and that's how we always remember it, but the name now is Elliot, Jennifer and Wesley Elliot. That is the legal access, and it, Mr. Pearson and Mr. Roskin, it came to us and asked if we consider access to our property, and we agreed with certain caveats, including road maintenance and the fact that we wanted to limit, we required that there be limited to seven, we didn't say 911 addresses, I'll admit. I'm not sure there was 911 there yet, but seven homes are seven structures. This that's before you will increase that. I'm not here to argue about the virtues of vacation homes for and against, I'm just talking about our easement, and those are a matter of public record. They are recorded, and as a matter of fact, I looked at the property that was sold to these people that are before you today for your consideration, and in that MLS from about 12 years ago, it's still in its entirety, it has all the documents, so they got the documents, but so did everybody else, but everybody forgets about what's in there, I'm afraid, because the road is in awful, awful condition. But right now, that's, I talked to Ron, and Ron, curiously enough, he was one of the proponents, he's one of the ones that were involved in the grassroots of this, and so he has a very complete knowledge of this situation, and he remembers the intent, and that's all I have. I just, if you have any questions, I mean, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Mr. Benning. Thank you, I appreciate you attending.
Thank you, Kim.
Okay, to go on, and then just to correct, so that we make sure we have it right, that the request here is for multiple dwelling, family dwelling. Just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page. Well, the staff has recommended continuance. Yes, you would just, come on forward. You have to introduce yourself just for the record, and then you can fire away with your question.
My name's Shane Michelson. We own Lot 5A up in Hill City Heights, and that was one of my concerns, because I know when we did all the paperwork at the title house was the road access, and thank you for that. One question I had is, it says multifamily dwelling, but just to clarify, is the intent to be used as a vacation rental property or a multi-unit building such as a duplex, triplex, apartment building, et cetera?
Megan can clarify that, because there are some regulations involved with that. Thank you, Megan.
Hi, Megan Talmadge Planner. The intent was to use it as a vacation home rental eventually, which would be a different conditional use permit, but since he's occupying part of the structure, it cannot be a vacation home rental, it would have to be a bed and breakfast.
That's correct, thank you. I agree. I'd looked that up, too, and I'm sure Mike didn't let it buy him. It would have to be a bed and breakfast, not a vacation home rental, if you did go the other way after getting the multifamily dwelling.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think just because that, one of the conditions that it has a separate 911 address, I don't want that to be the trigger to go over the threshold, so I just think we need to have the state's attorney's office take a closer look at that.
Are you, then, the staff's new recommendation is to continue, it's an open date at this time. Do you want to leave it open, staff?
With, from talking with the applicant, he is available for the April 10 meeting, but if you feel this will take longer, we can leave it open.
I would suggest that we continue this until the next, for two weeks until the next meeting.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue, item number CU 23-07, to the next scheduled meeting, which would be April 10, I believe. Megan shook her head yes, and we're going to go with April 10.
Okay.
Discussion.
I have one question. Has there been a building permit issued for the space above the garage yet, or is that pending this?
That is pending this conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Any discussion from members of the audience? From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Christine, I want to note here, Tom St. Hill is on Zoom, just for the record, so that the Commissioners know.
Thank you. Good morning. Christine Phillip, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number 10 is for conditional use CU 2308 to allow an illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district dwelling unit. The applicant is TNS Holdings II LLC, Tom St. Hill, who is on Zoom with us today. The location is 2,200 Fort Hayes Drive. The lot size is 5.67 acres. Current zoning is Highway Service District. Existing land use is RV Park slash campground. There's no specific flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applicants. They are as follows. Number one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, no, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, no, allowing the existing on-premise sign to be illuminated should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes, access is provided via an existing approach on Fort Hayes Drive. All utilities are in place. Five, yes, the existing approach provides ingress egress to the property. Number six, yes, the requested use confirms to all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located with an approved conditional use permit. Number seven, yes, future land use is identified as Highway Service District, an illuminated on-premise sign as an allowed use with an approved conditional use permit. The intra-departmental review, the request was routed to Highway Department, County Planning, County Ordinance Enforcement, and Black Hills Electrical Corporation. One concern was received. The County Highway Department, previous site visits found various encroachments. All encroachments must be removed, and approach permits must be filed and approved by the Highway Department for all existing approaches. Staff comment, this will be addressed when the applicant applies to obtain a conditional use permit for the existing RV park. Analysis, March 15, 2023, the staff performed a site visit to the subject property. B, the existing on-premise sign is located on the property. C, the applicant is proposing to replace existing message panel with an electrical message board. D, a conditional use permit is required to allow an illuminated sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2308 with conditions.
Thank you, Christine. Questions for Christine?
I have a question.
Go right ahead, Karen.
It's under violations, it says added RV sites without a CUP. Has that been taken care of?
This is one of the steps to bring the RV park into compliance.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Brittany.
Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. We have met with the applicant, and he is working through the process to bring the property into compliance and apply for the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Christine, I have a question. Did that all come up then when he was, because was it a grandfather-type of thing before that? And then because of the construction, it came to light that you needed to go through and get a CUP to do, okay. I just wanted to make, it wasn't, in other words, the hammer kind of dropped after they came in to do the other things? No?
Well, there was one Highway Department originally, there was some encroachment, so that kind of is what started the process of looking into it and the expansion and things.
His neighbor, his neighbor also has had some in the past. That's been a tough street, that old street, House 16, used to go through there and whatnot for the state to have those commercial properties on, I'm sure, for encroachments. From years ago, it came up, a long time ago. Thank you. Anything else for Christine? All right, Tom's on the Zoom, but I do have a speaker request form other than Tom's, and Tom, if it's all right with you, we usually, for time-wise, would hold you to be the second one to speak, so that you can address any new issues that come from the speaker request form. Is that all right, Tom?
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, and Matt? Please introduce yourself, just for the record, and go from there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Matt Naus, Gunnarson Palmer. Our firm represents Mr. St. Hill and TNS Holdings, and we are here in support of this application today. I believe it may be best if I can just provide my time to Mr. St. Hill to provide the relevant background, and then I can help answer any questions that may arise following Mr. Hill's comments, if that's okay with the Chair.
Sure. Okay. Tom, you're the next speaker request form, and we're going to reserve Matt's time to be after yours, if to clarify any points and additional information that we want at that time. Tom, would you like to say anything? You're the first speaker request form.
When I purchased the RV park in 2018, the existing sign was bare and illuminated at that time. It's been illuminated since the 60s. In roughly 2003, the old owner, Bob Byers, had the sign blow over in a storm, and in the process of rebuilding it, a woman from the county came by and asked about permits. At that time, a permit was obtained for rebuilding the sign, but for some reason at that time, Bob was unaware of it, I spoke with him, he sources scampered the park. He said he had no idea that they had never shut the box to make it be an illuminated sign. I came in a month or two ago, wanting to upgrade the existing sign on the property, which brought this to light that there was not the conditional use permit. It was grandfathered in before that time, and so I'd like to bring the sign into compliance. And that's kind of where we're at right now, hoping that we can get this resolved. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Is there questions for Tom before we go back to Matt? All right, thank you. Go ahead, man. You have to reintroduce yourself again, just for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt Naus, Gunnarson Palmer here with TNS, the applicant, Mr. St. Hill. Unless there are any other questions, I think I just close with the fact that, as Mr. St. Hill said, this light has, this sign has been illuminated for years, there have been no complaints that they're aware of regarding the illumination. Staff went through the criteria to be considered by this commission in evaluating a CUP, and unless there are any other questions, the applicant strongly supports the staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
I'm going to go ahead and recommend staff's recommendations to allow the illuminated sign or conditional use permit CU 23-08 with six conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, CU 23-08 with six conditions. Discussion from anyone from the audience? From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. On to item number 11.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 11 is rezone 23-04 to rezone from agriculture district to suburban residential district. The applicant is Tara Darby, their, or her agent is KTM Designs. Location of the property is 5650 East Highway 44. It is currently .36 acre zone agriculture district. Access is off East Highway 44, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When staff evaluates these requests, they do take into account current zoning within one half mile, and that is on the left-hand side of the screen. We also look at future land use, which is on the right-hand side of the screen. The request is to rezone to suburban residential. You can see the majority of this surrounding property in brown is suburban residential. Future land use is the same. We also take into account roads and streets. East Highway 44 is a 208-foot public right-of-way. It is currently 24 feet wide, paved with shoulders. There's also an easement that accesses subject property off of East Highway 44. Infrastructure, there is private water and sewer on the property. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the subject property is part of the Murphy Ranch subdivision expansion. The future land use of the property is suburban residential, therefore comprehensive plan amendment is not required. Staff finds no significant issues with the request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land use within the area and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. With that, staff recommends approval of rezone 23-04.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? I have to tell you, I was going to tease Cody, this is the first time we saw a rezon surrounded by bodies requested. We don't see many of those, do we? Anything else for Jason? Anyone here from the public that, I don't have a speaker request form on this, but anyone from the public desire to speak on this matter? Chair would address a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve rezone 23-04 per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 12.
Agenda item number 12 is rezone 23-05 to rezone from agricultural district to suburban residential district. Applicants are Alan and Verilyn Prince. Their agent is KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 5654 East Highway 44. It is .36 acre, currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off East Highway 44, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. This is adjacent to the prior agenda item, to the north. Again, staff does take into account current zoning within one half mile on the left-hand side of the screen. Future land use is identified on the right, similar to the last request. You can see the majority of that zoning and future land use is suburban residential. Again, the property access is off of East Highway 44, which is a 208-foot public right-of-way, 24 feet wide, paved with shoulders. Again, there is an easement that is connecting that property from East Highway 44. Infrastructure is private, with water and sewer. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis request of the property, staff's analysis of the request is that the subject property is part of the Murphy Ranch subdivision expansion. Future land use of the property is suburban residential district, therefore there is no comprehensive plan amendment required. Staff finds no significant issues with the request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land use within the area and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. Therefore, staff recommends approval of rezone 23-05.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Will the developer be bringing in a rezon for the whole area, or how will that happen as this expansion proceeds?
I think it's just kind of housekeeping at this point with these two existing lots that are out there that are zoned agriculture. Just bringing those into the rest of the development. I think they were the existing ones that's out there at that time.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jason? Anyone from the audience here to speak on this matter? I don't have a speaker request form. Chair would address a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve rezone 23-05 per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Discussion from the audience. Discussion from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13.
Agenda item number 13 is preliminary plan 23-06 to subdivide and create lots one and lot two of Argyle subdivision. The applicant is Argyle Properties LLC. The agent is Anu Ali. The additional agent is Jim Peterson. He's in the audience if you have any questions for him. Their surveyor is Britton Engineering. Location of the property is 23911 Hidden Valley Trail. It is currently 13.55 acres. Zone agriculture district. Access is off Hidden Valley Trail. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. I have on the screen the existing property on the left and the proposed lots on the right. Proposed lot one will be 7.696 acres. Will have a shop building, a single-family residence, a detached garage, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot two here identified in, sorry, lot, I got those mixed up. Lot one will be 5.845 acres and vacant. Lot two will have the shop building, single-family residence, and detached garage and onsite wastewater treatment system. I apologize for that. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property and create two lots. On the February of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved rezone 22-31 to rezone the subject property from agriculture to ranchette. The proposed plat shows additional dedication of the plat at easement to 66 foot wide. You can see that running here through both properties. Both proposed lots. Hidden Valley Road will need to be improved to 24 feet wide. There is a subdivision regulations variance 23-01 to waive this requirement, and that will be heard at the April 4th Board of Commissioners meeting. And Rockerville Fire Department does have concerns with the availability of water in the area. With that, staff recommends approval of preliminary plan 22-25 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason? I have one. When we looked at this, when they were looking at the rezone for the ranchettes, were the setback issues on that original building resolved?
I believe they were, yes, and that's.
Yeah, I couldn't. Jim's shaking his head. He's going to tell me when he comes up here, so I just couldn't remember whether, and I didn't pull out the old one, so I appreciate you answering my question. All right, anything else for Jason? Thank you, Jason. We do have a speaker request form on this. Darcy Gunderson. Thank you, Darcy. Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Okay, my name is Darcy Gunderson. I live at 23896 Hidden Valley Trail, which is right across the street from this property. I do have a couple of questions. I was not notified of this meeting. Is that something that wasn't supposed to have been done for this particular meeting? Normally, we get a certified letter in the mail that tells us, you know, 10 days in advance when the meeting is. And I talked with my neighbors, and they didn't receive anything. The only reason I know about this meeting today is because of the road commission. They're the ones that told me.
I'm not sure there's a notice required or the PPL, is there?
No, there's no statutory requirement for public notice.
Okay, I was just curious.
That's fine.
I didn't have.
It's a good question, Darcy.
Okay, all right. And then my biggest complaint is changing the name. Right now, she wants to change that to Argyle subdivision. Currently, it is Baumgartner subdivision. And, you know, as far as us that live in that area and the road district, to keep continuity, we would really like to keep that as a Baumgartner subdivision. You know, maybe make it lot five, lot six, or something along that line, just so there's no confusion.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Questions for Darcy? Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, I'm all about compromises, and, you know, originally, they wanted three lots, and I know there's been a lot of opposition to this, but I think there is a compromise with the two lots, so I appreciate working with the other side. I think it's a good compromise.
Okay.
That's it.
Anyone else from the audience? Would you like to speak? I don't have your speaker request form, but if you like, you certainly may, Mr. Peterson. If you introduce yourself for the record. I think Darcy had a question there in here, that it would be better coming from me to answer.
Hi, Jim Peterson, agent for this.
Thank you.
Yep. So to answer your previous question, though, that variance was approved, and for that.
Okay.
Setback.
Thank you.
And as far as the, as I took it, as the name change for these two lots, none of the other lots are affected by this, you know? So we had to put a name to it, too, so that's what we put to it, I guess. Argyle, and of course, the, Anita's not here. She's thinking this meeting is going to be a little later, so she's going to show up in probably about a half hour, but. So I don't know what her issue would be with that, but it is what it is right now, and it's at Argyle one and Argyle two, I think.
Go right ahead.
Was the name change, the subdivision name change, at her request, do you know?
Was that, we had to put a, we had, by the, you know, when applying for it, we had to state something.
Okay, because existing.
It wasn't necessarily a, you know, I don't think it is terrible meaning to it.
Jim, are you trying to tell us you filled in the blank with that? There was a blank on the form, and it had to be.
We had to come up, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's typical.
Jason's going to answer the question.
Whenever we take in a plan application, there has to be a subdivision name, whether that's using the existing subdivision and adding different lots to that, or creating your own new subdivision name. That's kind of a preference of the applicant.
You know, it's really, it comes up only really on deeds and stuff like that, right? So I'm not sure the major significance of the name, other than that it's clearly identified.
Right, and the register of deeds had no issues or concerns with it either.
Okay, then my question, we, the planning department has no issue with it at this time?
No.
My question to you, Jim, would be, would you please review this with your applicant? It appears to be an issue with their neighbors. So if you would at least review that and come up with a finalization?
Yeah.
Then we do what the applicant has asked.
Yeah, well, certainly would ask Anita, just wouldn't want it to delay any further, as this has been prolonged quite a bit.
Any other questions for Mr. Peterson while he's up here?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, if that was to change, then ask Jason, that could just be a change during the final. You know, it wouldn't be having to come back, right? So it wouldn't be a, it would just be on the plan to change.
Don't believe it's a reviewable item by us, is it?
No, it's just, it would just be an administrative change to the final plan.
So that's easy enough to handle? Should she want to.
That makes the commissioners feel a little more comfortable? Okay. Thank you, Jim. If you have nothing else. Jason?
Yep.
Anything from you?
No, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that has, would like to speak on this item? If not, the chair would address a motion.
So move?
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, PPL 22-25, and I believe it has 10 conditions. Discussion from the audience? From the commission, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number 14.
Agenda item number 14 is vacation of plat 22-02 to vacate a portion of private roadway easement on the plat. The applicant is Lucky Cuss LLC, Michael Hutt. The existing, I'm sorry, location is 13217 Klondike Road. The lot size is 4.1, 4.61 acres, currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off Highway 16, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. As the property sits today, it is vacant of any structures or utilities. Some of the history on the subdivision, it was originally platted in 1962. They're subsequently revised to become lot B revised in November of 1976. The request, so you can see here, what they're asking to do is this little highlighted portion of this plat at easement. We're looking to vacate that off of the plat. So this would be the exhibit that would be filed at the register of deeds, showing that that would be removed. As you can see, Klondike Road traverses this portion of property and provide access. These folks take access off of Highway 16. Well, this lot would take access off Highway 16. There's really no reason to have that portion of easement on his property. That's why he's requesting to vacate it. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no issues or concerns. With that, staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant has requested to vacate a portion of the private roadway. A portion of the easement to be vacated on the applicant's property is at the end of the easement. All lots within the subdivision will remain, will have legal access, and none of that will change. So with that, staff recommends approval of vacation of plat 23-02 with one condition.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason? Mike?
The road as it is now, is it being used?
It does not appear to be.
Sure. You have to introduce yourself just for the record, and you can go from there.
I'm Kirsten Hockhausen. I'm an officer of the Lucky Cuss LLC, and I just wanted to speak on this a little bit. To our knowledge, this easement has never been used. There's not a road there in any fashion right now. And it's a dead-end easement, because it leads right up to National Forest Service, not straight to Klondike Road. And that part of National Forest Service has a steep embankment, a creek, and no easement through National Forest Service. So we actually don't really know what the purpose ever was of that easement, but to our knowledge, it's never been utilized.
So even if you wanted to use it?
You couldn't. It would just bring you to the corner of our property and then a steep embankment and a creek with no, with no easement from our property to Klondike Road through the National Forest Service.
Jason, could you take your arrow again and show where that's on the property on your, thank you. Your arrow saved me from my question, because it was similar to Mike's.
Sure.
So.
Yeah.
It does show, thank you.
So here would be the vacated portion of the easement, right here. It would appear to cut across basically here.
Yep, and then here, do you mind if I?
Sure.
Because, yep, the easement is just from here to here, and then right here, yep, is National Forest Service with a creek and a steep embankment and no easement through National Forest Service. And then all the other surrounding properties already have access through their private roads from 16.
Hi, I'm Gavin Williams. I'm with the Lucky Cuss as well. There's actually no road here either. There's nothing. So this, there's only one property here, and they access it through here. So if you go back to that original slide, you could kind of see that second, that easement on lot one right here, right here, that, there's nothing there either. So we just happened to notice this across here and thought, well, we should probably get rid of that. That's where it kind of came up.
Kevin, just for the record, what was your last name?
Gavin Williams.
Gavin?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jason, can you put the GIS map back up? So then I assume the northeast corner of that property is the access down to the other owners of Klondike back in there? The very northeast?
Yes.
Is this the first property that you access up the Highway 16?
Where do we access? Is that what that question is?
Yeah, are you looking to access off Klondike Road?
We actually have an easement, Forest Service easement, and we access it right here.
Right, but the owner, like the Rushmore Music Festival, they go through your property?
I think this is off. I don't think our property is, actually encompasses Klondike. It comes to within 10 feet about right here.
Yeah, this GIS map, it's not totally accurate.
Yeah. We could, we could charge him a little bit to go right through there and do it.
Okay, I'll let that one slide by. Any questions then for either Jason or Gavin?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve vacation of.
Thank you, Gavin.
22-02.
Second. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved in second that we approve per staff's recommendation vacation of plat 23-02. Discussion from the audience? From the commission. I just have one if the staff might want a note in the file, because we are dealing with a controversial road here. That there's probably other matters. If that does go through the corner of their property, there's probably other existing statutes that protect. The use of Klondike Road? There isn't. It doesn't. Your shirt misses it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure staff was comfortable that this didn't slap us all alongside the head in a couple of months. Okay, it's on the other end of the property. I realize that. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. On to item number 15.
So item number 15 is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the March 13th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Item number 16, items from the public? Items from the staff? Shaking your head, no? Items from the membership, the special meeting, March 29th, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. We do have the agenda put together. Oh, okay. All right, we'll let you out the door. Megan, I, you've been so busy. I let Brittany and I let Karen read, I did write up the announcements that we were going to use, and I would like you to take a look at them before, see if I forgot anything, because I'll finalize them.
I'll have Brittany come up to you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anything else on that meeting? After the announcements, and I think it's a great idea, Karen and I sat in on a meeting with Brittany and Megan to try to put this meeting together. This will be the final public meeting that's scheduled. So that we're not trying to hide that from anybody, but after the announcements, and I have a number of them, and any one of you can see, I only have one copy right now. And it's in regards to this being the last meeting, they have the right to follow it in different directions. And through our meetings and this sort of thing, for instance, April 10th is scheduled to review some of those matters that we decide as a commission, we'd like to discuss in front of the public, but we'd like to discuss them and perhaps act upon them or reword them. Is that a good way to put it? All right, but anyway, so those things are going to come up, and I believe the commissioners that are here are definitely going to be, Ron, you're going to be sitting in on that meeting on the 10th?
Correct.
All right. Anyway, so we have those announcements, and they're covered, and we're going back to the format, the three minutes with the one minute and a half. That, other than that, I don't think there's anything of interest. It's a basic agenda. If, if the public decides at 5:30 they're done talking, the meeting will adjourn. So just so we all know that upfront, it's for the public to comment on this ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, I think one of the things I'd like to, the last meeting, the one acre size, that got a lot of traction. I think we need to kind of figure out how we want to go forward with that one acre. I'm starting to lean that maybe that's too restrictive, but that's one thing I think we should discuss a little bit, and then parking. When you say parking, are we, is there a more defined definition of what parking is? Because somebody comes in with a extended cab truck and a snowmobile trailer, that's going to take more than a normal parking space, so do we want to try to define what a parking space is when we say you're going to have four parking spaces? What does that really mean? Because one parking space could be an acre.
There's actually even a third one that was transferred. We all wrote down different ones that need additional discussion from the commission. And Karen, after my announcement, she's going to ask that she be allowed to say something, and she wants to tell the audience and the folks that are here to make sure that if there are other items on their mind, that they bring them up at this meeting. So that the Planning Commission has an opportunity to review them at that April 10th meeting and talk about some of those. We have a number of topics. I'm sure you all have different topics that you'd like to review at the April 10th meeting. I'm sure you all have different topics that you'd like to review at the April tenth meeting.
One of mine would be density also, because the statute or the ordinance says that you can, no more than five percent of the single-family residences, that, that's kind of the threshold for, uh, vacation home rentals, but the ordinance doesn't say that those all five percent could be in one defined area, and I think we need to address that, because we don't. I mean, technically, they could all be within a quarter mile, and that would not, I don't think that's what we want. So I think we have to define density and how we spread that out, so we don't get it too dense in one particular area, or neighborhood or subdivision.